Oh, I was like, wow, that was brutal. And I realized, who is this shooter?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I think I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
She went back. She's sixteen. Yeah. 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 Knock on the door. Do I really feel that? Yeah. 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 The hour is over. Okay. Okay. Yeah. 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 Who was? Yeah. Yeah. We had to break tradition. So instead of...
I don't understand. Did you see what matters that you know? The heart is central. The heart is where we're at. And it's great. It was great. Yeah. It was the past. It was hilarious. It's gonna be realized in the... And I did it every time for like seven months. And so then kind of this little like, what is it? Right? We're not like, okay. I mean, for my speech, I didn't hear any...
Those two chairs are...
Yes. And so John is one of the...
Right. You got us all nice and beautiful.
Not even sure for example.
Oh, yeah. That's the best time I've ever seen this. No, we're not.
Yes. So everybody just changed their...
Yeah. I see some conversation there. Yeah. Yeah. Interesting. Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Call this meeting to order and ask that you please stand if you're able for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated, and welcome to our city council meeting. On Linsburg, Kansas, October sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Item number three on our agenda is public input, and I think at this time we don't have anybody speaking at this moment. We'll turn our attention to item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening?
There are no amendments.
Thank you. Item number five, mayor's report. Anybody doing anything this weekend?
Yeah.
I want to thank a lot of people, so we'll go by just groups, city council members. Thank you for all your efforts. I saw you all over the place, and I just appreciate it. Council member Bruce, is it easier than when you were chair?
Yes.
Well, that's good.
Not even a question on that one.
Okay.
I don't have sheikels, so I'm good to go.
Very, very good, and want to thank Chief Davis, the police department, the ambulance, and everybody for being ready to go and keeping us safe from all of that, and all of our city crew, all of our employees that did all kinds of things over the weeks leading up to this and then this weekend, and it just went really, really well, I think. And I was just super pleased. I talked to a lot of people out on the streets and in different locations, and people were having a good time. So I think you all saw the same thing. And anyway, just everybody that was involved in any way, we thank them for their efforts. And particularly, the only two people I was going to name by name was Janelle and Tessa. And we have Janelle here this evening to, and want to say thank you for all your efforts. Why don't you come up and give us a little bit of your input, what you thought?
Well, it was the best festival of two thousand and twenty-three, let me know it. Everything that we could control went exactly to plan. Can't control the weather, so it was awesome. Thanks to all of you truly volunteers that run this town. So there are three people I want to shout out specifically. Roxy, thank you for thinking of things that we wouldn't have even thought of. Terry Reed solved problems before I had a solution, with better solutions than I could have thought of. And Chris Lenholm, you're a rock star, so thank you.
Thank you.
We just wanted to say thank you, and we're glad that we, we're glad we're in the best square mile on it.
Well, thank you so much for everything that you did, and I was, council, I was going to call them and invite them to the meeting, and then I said, I'm not going to do that. So it's shocking that you are here.
Oh, it's not my first radio.
Thanks for the wonderful job. It was just fantastic, everything from coffee bottles. Thanks so much.
And just the money. Tessa wanted to be here, but she handled ad hoc this morning, so I said I'd go to sleep. So tab, team knit, all the way.
So who lost the coin flip?
Actually, I picked this one because then I didn't have to. Tessa was smart and took today off.
Since we meet today, I guess she lost. Yeah, no kidding. Well, thank you so much. And anybody on the council want to say anything or give you a...
I thought it was fantastic from top to bottom. It was so much fun, and there were so many activities for people to do, and I didn't notice a thing went wrong. And I know what goes on behind the scenes, so congratulations to you guys. That was awesome.
Thank you.
And you looked so happy the entire weekend, which I really admired, so.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that. It was...
Forced.
I'm going home.
It was my ninth festival, and I think this was the most crowded I've ever seen.
Really?
Yes. I mean, everywhere, there's just a lot of people all over, and even right down to the grid. It looked the busiest and the most crowded I've ever seen.
That's awesome. That's always the goal, to build on top of it. Thank you.
Thanks so much, and thanks for being here today.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
This was my first official festival in my role. The last festival I was here ahead of my interviews, but I've been to a lot of homies best through the years as Bethany student and as an alum and working for Bethany. But I never truly realized what went on behind the scenes and from the city's perspective. And being part of it was truly wonderful, and it was wonderful working with the committee and with all the volunteers and my crew at the city, talking all the way, and I'm very proud to be part of it. So thanks to everybody.
Got a rock solid team, that's what it takes. And everybody was... All right. Hey, doll, I'm going home. Thanks, Janelle.
We will now move to item number six, which is the consent agenda. And these items are routine enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless a council member wishes to speak to them separately. Item A is approval of the minutes from the meeting of October second, two thousand and twenty-three. Item B, payroll ordinance number five, four, five, three. And item C, purchase order ordinance number five, four, five, four. Is there a motion to pass the consent?
Number of second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask our city clerk to please call roll.
Council members, Gallant?
Yes.
Janeway? Yes. Peterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Roxy. Let's turn our attention to item number seven, appointments. Are there any appointments this evening?
No.
Thank you. Item number eight, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports?
We do not.
Thank you. Item number nine, old business. Do we have any old business?
There is no business. These meetings are my favorite.
Okay, and we'll now turn our attention to item number ten, new business. Item A is the Epic Grant Match, and you are familiar with that. You have heard about that, and of course, seeing the information in the packet, I will call on our city administrator to fill in on the current match.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Council member Bruce, I'm happy to stretch this out.
Yeah.
So Holly Lockton, our CBB director, prepared this agenda item, but she is representing the travel industry at award meetings, so I will be filling in in the place. So city staff, as you may recall, approached city council on April third of this year to share that the Kansas Department of Commerce and the Creative Arts Industries Commission had selected Linsburg as one of four Kansas communities to receive grant dollars for a new program called Engaging Placemaking in Innovative Communities, also known as EPI. The grant required that a community project be chosen, and our group that we assembled attended multiple evening classes and work sessions across the state. And the project that was to be selected should elevate arts in the community. So initially, when we came to council in April, the idea was to incorporate art in some way into our site plan for a future recreation facility that would benefit the entire community. And at that time, the council approved an expenditure of up to ten thousand dollars in matching funds from the city to go towards the Epic program. Due to the timeline of city projects and the Epic grant deadline, and how quickly this moved forward and conversations with the Department of Commerce staff, the city staff has determined that the Epic grant does not best fit with the recreation center site plan project, and rather, the Epic project that has been chosen has been deemed arts on the prairie. It's an educational program that will be run through the Zanzing Gallery, utilizing the Zanzing staff, resources, and financial accountability and auditing. And Ron Michael and his staff with the direction of the focus group will work to obtain the cost of hiring a variety of artists to teach onsite classes that would last from a Sunday arrival through a Friday appearance, making this a nice addition of weekday overnights for lodging in the community as well as other benefits to the community. Bethany College has also been involved in the focus groups. They are encouraging use of the venture-backed facilities for classes, which helps us to partner with the college and with this program. So the staff in the focus group are also exploring ways to mix class time and time from the community. They've begun to envision how this will look in years beyond the pilot year when this kicks off in two thousand and twenty-four. And over time, as this has been developing, the Department of Commerce has revised their grant monies, and they are now offering up to forty-five thousand dollars for this project. And a twenty-five percent local match is still required, which is eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. So the new proposal that's coming to you this evening is that the city would provide the fifty percent of the required match, and then the other fifty percent would be split between the Zanzing Gallery and the Linsburg Arts Council. And this is a reduction in what city council has previously approved, which is up to the ten thousand dollars, but it is a change in focus. So we wanted to come back this evening, let you learn more about the program that has been chosen, the project that we are pitching to the Kansas Department of Commerce, and to allow you to ask questions about what has been chosen, the process we have gone through. And also, we have guests in the audience from those partnering organizations, so they would be willing to answer questions or address any concerns that you might have as well. So the recommendation this evening would be a motion to approve a grant match for the Epic project in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, as presented.
Council, we're going to have, ask our guests in a couple of minutes to come up and tell us about the program. But are there any questions for our city administrator regarding the technical aspects of the Epic grant and its relationship to what you passed earlier? Okay, seeing... Well, I just clarify, so we've already been awarded the grant?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to... Okay, thank you, and we are delighted to have two guests this evening. Ron Michael from the Zanzing Gallery and Pam Ash from the Linsburg Arts Council. I ask you both to come up, and we just invite you to tell us wherever you'd like to.
Well, you can do that. So in one thing, in Cory's question, I don't know that it's formally been approved yet. We're still in the process, but Holly and I think myself feel that it certainly will be approved. The match is okay. And Christie did a really nice job kind of giving an overview of what the program is. We're still trying to figure a few things out. We have to go contacting artists that could come in and lead the workshops. And we've had a few that just are booked at that time, but several of them have already kind of agreed in principle to do that, so we're excited about that. And I mean, I really think it would be a great thing for the community, because they're, you know, not necessarily just for kids, they're, it's kind of a wide range of ages that I think could really benefit from these. And also, our ideal is that it'll bring a lot of people to the community and hopefully a lot of exposure to the community as well. So I mean, I think it's a, it's a lot of work, and it's pretty new to us, so I'm still trying to figure stuff out, but I think it'll really benefit us in the long run.
I don't have a whole lot to add. We're kind of the linny side, we're hoping. It hasn't come to an official vote. We have our next meeting next Monday, but via email conversation, everybody's on board, on the board directors and the arts council. I think it, it's a good vision for the city to have a future and growing aspect we haven't approached before, bringing in artists nationally and then visitors from around the country, and that would really boost our tourism plan.
And we're going to kind of start out fairly slow, so we've got a couple local, fairly local, Kansas-based artists to really get things going and potentially bring in some other ones as well. As Christie said, the whole idea is that we're not just focusing on artist workshops, but we want to expose those that participate in the workshops as well as the artists with this, the prairie landscape around Linsburg, the Smoky Valley area. So we envision during their sessions, I mean, most of the sessions will be pretty involved during the day, so they'll be active from about nine to noon, take a lunch break, which will be provided, and then from about one-thirty till five, they'll continue in their workshop with their workshop leader. And then after that, we'll do some kind of event out in the community. And we still haven't got all that nailed down yet, but that's kind of what we envision. It's not just where they're staying at Bethany College, and that's, I feel like they maybe are going to go back to the room. Some maybe do that, but we really want people to get out in the community too.
Nice barbecue down the country, is what you mean?
Or not, yes.
Yeah. So a nice windy day.
And so right now, we're looking at the first week of this would take place June second through June sixth. And then the second week would be Sunday evening, June ninth through Thursday evening, June thirteenth. So early June, kind of after school's out, and hopefully people are getting ready to do a little vacation.
Before midsummers.
Yeah, and before midsummers.
And we're expecting to try to have about ten people per artist. And so we're having two artists a week or four or five days, then there'd be about twenty attendees that we're shooting for each week.
And we purposely are starting out fairly slow to kind of get through some of those learning curves, and then hopefully we'll ramp it up where we could have maybe four sessions per week. And then event, you know, who knows? And it's not just necessarily the fine arts. I mean, we want to also eventually include theater, music, other areas as well.
Thank you. Council, are there comments, questions? Is there a tuition for the students?
There is. The one we're looking at now is around seven hundred dollars. But what I would also like to see, and I'm going to see if I can, I'll contact kind of the person that oversees this grant and see if we can potentially move some of those monies into providing scholarships for people, so that it would be a variety. And ideally, like I said, it would be, you know, maybe high school students, on up to adults that could attend the workshops.
Council member Chris? So who would, you mentioned maybe around the country, would bring students or participants in? And what would your target market be as far as people?
Probably a lot of it depends on the workshop person. So we're kind of looking for people that have a national reputation, that have a good following around social media. One example that I think we're looking towards, I shouldn't say an actual name, but she's a ceramic artist from St. John, Kansas. I mean, she's done workshops throughout the nation periodically. And so we're hoping that she has a pretty good following, so, you know, maybe somebody from Minneapolis, Minnesota or other places will come for the chance to have her workshop experience.
For arts education teachers, would it count for continuing credit, continuing education?
That would be something, yeah, we'd have work with Bethany on that. But I would think, I mean, I can guarantee that, but I would think it would definitely, that would be a target audience as well.
I think a lot of other places that do workshops like this do offer credit for that.
Any further questions, council?
I guess, just this may be obvious, but so the idea is that this Epic grant helps with the first year, and then the idea is that it would be self-sustaining?
That's the hope.
Yeah.
And then we would probably have to go out and maybe look at other grant opportunities to...
To keep the tuition affordable for you. Is the, do we have any sense of the Epic? Is it one year, only do we know?
Well, it's, and that's something I was going to mention, is the reason why I and they are kind of, well, is that it's a pilot program. So this is the first time they've done this grant. So councilor Peter, so I misunderstood your question. The grant money hasn't actually been given, but because we were one of the communities that was chosen, you know, it's pretty safe to say that we're going to continue to work through this and be giving grant money.
Because of the nature of the pilot?
Yes, yes. So because it's kind of evolving, Department of Commerce is working on this, all the project participants, as we have evolved through the program and are learning more, it's developing kind of as we go. So there are no certainties, but we would hope that the success of the programs throughout the communities that have been chosen would allow it to continue.
So it could continue, but there could be more competition, because it would be open to other entities about it. Okay.
Because some of the other entities too have chosen really kind of projects that are totally different from this. I think we're the only one that I'm aware of that are kind of doing workshops.
I appreciate your willingness to partner with the city and with Arts Council and you and the gallery. I think that's great to have a partnership.
Yeah, don't mess with us.
Let me think about that.
Okay, thank you, Ron and Pam, for being here this evening, and we appreciate what you do very much. And this sounds like a wonderful program, and thank you for your work that you've done and the work that you all do. Council, are there any further questions for our city administrator regarding the suggested motion?
A comment, I'm just excited that we could hit it quick. What the original plans do this morning, so we could tell.
Well, if you recall that when Holly first talked to us, she said that, and this kind of speaks to our administrator, who said that we are favorably looked at in the cap role. And so it sounded as if they wanted to, us to come up with something, this is a, this is a great one. So I appreciate that kind of pivot, but we got started, and then, you know, things, circumstances change. We came up and this is, this is a little great project, so. Any further comments, administrator? Okay. I would entertain a motion as to approve the grant match for the Epic project in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars as presented. Is there a motion?
So who?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, we'll ask our city clerk to call roll, please.
Council members, Miss?
Yes.
Bruce? Yes. Chris Lee?
Yes.
Janeway?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, council, and thank you, Roxy. Thank you, Christie, for your input, and thank you, Ron and Pam, for not only being here, but for all of your efforts. We appreciate it very much, and we look forward to seeing this come to fruition, so. Thank you. We'll now turn our attention to item B, which is almost ironic, because our item B, we have what? They've left the room. Sewer maintenance, so we'll have our public works director, Chris Lenholm.
It's an interesting topic. I'd like to first just, and maybe should have jumped up when everybody was acknowledging him, or the Homies Fest and all that. But I'd like to acknowledge the staff and public works, streets department especially. They put in a lot of extra effort during this time, with a lot of help from all the other crews. But I'd like to also acknowledge Janelle and Tessa this year, plus the committee over the past several festivals. I think we've made some very positive changes over these festivals that have really reflected in the direction that the festival seems to be going. There seems to be a lot of energy, and I want to credit that committee and those co-chairs that have brought a lot of youth and a lot of energy, and I think that really is reflecting. We get paid to do this. We know every two years we're going to be doing this and what it's going to require for us. They're all volunteers, so anybody that has been part of that committee over the years, kudos to them. They, they put a lot in, and it's all volunteer, and it's, it's really reflected over the last several festivals, I believe. So I'd like to acknowledge that, and they're, they're a real privilege to work with and trying to make these festivals as productive as they are and as enjoyable as they have been. So just want to acknowledge that. Sewer maintenance, I'm not even going to get into the details of this, because we do this every year. It's plain and simple maintenance that we contract out, have a company come in and do some cleaning of sewer lines, and it has been very productive in trying to reduce sewer backups throughout the community. So we're simply looking for a motion to approve the quote from Mayor's Specialty Services to clean the sewers as part of the annual maintenance sewer program for a not-to-exceed price of ten thousand dollars.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for our public works director?
In the city, are there certain prone areas that we...
There are. There are areas that we track and know that are repeat areas, and we hit them on a very regular basis and have reduced those to where we really don't have any issues at all, so.
Because I live north of Bethany Home, I appreciate that.
And that was one of them that was very problematic.
Low air.
Yes.
Further questions? Seeing no further questions, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Council, the recommendation is for a motion to approve the quote from Mayor's Specialty Services to clean sewers as part of the annual sewer maintenance program at a price not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
So who?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions on the motion? Seeing no questions, I'm going to ask our city clerk, please call roll.
Council members, Janeway? Yes. Gallant?
Yes.
Chris Lee?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, council, thank you, Roxy. Now move our attention, turn our attention to item number eleven, and ask our administrator if we have need for executive session, see.
Please do.
Thank you. Item twelve, other business. Is there other business that we want to consider?
I have a new business that I just wanted to have a comment. I know the outcome of the KDOT meeting was presented in our notes to council, but I just wanted to take an opportunity to commend our city administrator and her staff for the organization and preparation for that meeting. It was really fascinating to attend, to know that that existed. But clearly, she did a thorough job of intelligence and enabled us to really represent the city well. We had enough people to be in every listening session, and it resulted in our proposal being, you know, highly rated across, and I think that wasn't an accident, but happened through thorough planning and execution. So thank you to you and your staff.
Agreed. Thank you, thank you, all that attended and put forth effort to be there. That's a super event. Okay, any further items? Seeing no further business before the council, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I was going to say, council member Bruce?
I know, I know.
I know, I know.
Second.
Second. All of you. Any questions? All in favor, if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Now we are adjourned. Thank you, council.